I hereby call to order in recording of quorum. This day, November tenth, twenty twenty-five, six P M. The Balcony Heights Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. First thing on business item will be the approval of minutes that was held on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a mission, a motion to approve? Has everybody read those minutes? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Aye.
We have a second. I'll be Mister Eloy Figueroa. Okay, next business of our item will be the consideration to take possible action for planning and zoning commission. They shall elect a chairperson amongst its members present. Do I have any motions?
I make a motion that we ask Eddie Garcia to be the new chair.
Do I have a second?
Second, aye. Offer discussion?
No discussion? Motion carries?
No, call for, call for the vote?
Call for the vote now?
Aye. Push the button.
Aye.
There you go.
The ayes have it? Thank you. Now, at the same time, we'll be calling the planning's own commission shall elect a vice chairperson amongst his members. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Eloy.
I make a motion that we elect Santiago Ortega.
Aye for Santiago Ortega.
Call for a vote? Call for any discussion? No discussion, okay. Call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it? And now we have open for public hearing. Commission will hold a public hearing to receive public comments on amending the city codes of ordinance, chapter one fifty-three zoning codes, article three zoning districts and use regulations. Or amending one five three point three point one point sixteen, seven zero zero one west I H ten. For the P U D, PUD zoning district requirements, three use permit. So I move to recommend to the city council approval or disapproval of the proposed amendments to the city's code of ordinance, chapter one fifty-three zoning codes, article three, zoning districts and use regulations amending one fifty-three point three point one point sixteen of seven zero zero one west I H ten, PUD zoning district requirement section three, use permitted to include motor vehicle and service repair.
Mister Garcia, pick approve or disapprove?
So this will be approved or disapproved?
Are you making a motion to approve it?
I'm making a motion to approve.
I second it.
Call for discussion?
Yes. So I hereby open the public hearing.
You're opening the public hearing at six oh five?
Yes, opening the public hearing at six oh five. For discussion.
We have no one signed up?
We have nobody signed up? Or do we, okay? Yes.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me like that? Uh, thank you to the commission for allowing me to say a few words. So my name is Ian Fisher. I'm one of the owners of the Balconies Heights Business Park. Um, over the last three or four years, we developed this business park. It's on the seven thousand and one I ten. Uh, and I'm happy to say the park has turned out to be everything that we said it would be. You know, over the months of preparation, the idea was to have a good business park for ourselves, have a good business park for the city. Uh, and we've got, we've been open for actual for leasing and for tenants for about three months and we have seventeen tenants that have moved in, which is pretty good. We're excited, that's good for us, that's good for the city. Um, and we have a tenant who has an application in for a certificate of occupancy. And what he does, it's a high-end detail, uh, business that he has there. There's no mechanical repair, there's no auto repair, there's no mechanical work whatsoever. Um, we've been very strict with what we will allow in the park. From day one, we've had a lot of applications from just regular auto type companies. We've had application from Bales Bond type companies and even a few hemp companies, but we very strict about what we want in there. This, this particular business, we think will be, you know, will fit the criteria that we want, which is a clean business. There's no noise and no interference with the rest of our, our business park. We've got a lot of high-end tenants. And so that's the reason we submitting the application, just to see if we can change this amendment in the code. Okay, any, perhaps any questions I could answer for anybody?
What is the name of the business again, please?
The bit is, he calls himself, I'll just read it out to you here. Zero, it calls himself zero two muscle protection. Quite an interesting name, but that's the name of the business. And so what they really do is they put these high-end finishes onto vehicles to protect them. It's like a coating, so it's really an upper end type thing.
Uh, I do have a question, do you, can you elaborate on the actual owner?
Uh, the owner's a military man, he's a retired major. Um, and he's a terrific individual. Um, he's come along and done everything that he said he would, he's been very polite. Every time he's spoken to the city, I know that, that Nick has talked to him a few times. And we interview all these, these tenants, you know, before they even send in the applications once again, because we want good tenants. So he's definitely a first-class veteran.
That's all I have. Anybody else?
As far as you're aware of, will there be any pollution or runoff or debris to the area of their location?
None whatsoever, yeah, we don't want any runoff, any pollution, any washing, any water that takes. Sorry. How about that? Uh, everything, all the water will be trapped, it'll be contained within the space, it'll be put into barrels. It'll be evaporated in those barrels and hauled off, you know, the residue will be hauled off, but there's no runoff whatsoever.
Anybody else have any questions?
If we go ahead and approve this, what else does it open up? As far as other businesses looking to come to the area, is there anything else that we would be, um, approving without?
Yeah, that, that's something I can cover whenever I get to my presentation, but it is covered here in a few minutes.
Okay, you have anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So at this moment, consider the possible action and a recommendation to the city council.
Chairman, before we move on, so let's go ahead and put that announcement that you're going to close the, uh, close the public hearing and the, the time of the closure.
And hereby close the discussion. Number one. And put it to vote? Is that correct? At six-ten.
Yes, sir, and, and so now you can call for any discussion or presentation on the actual item and item number two.
Here called for discussion? Go ahead.
Waiting for the presentation to come up here.
Okay.
Oh, I'll get here. Cool, all right, good evening, uh, council members, board members. Welcome, new members here, glad to have you. Um, so just wanna quickly, you know, go over this presentation. If you have any questions for me, I know we already had one and we'll kind of cover that here shortly. Um, the property in question is seven thousand and one west I H ten is the new business park on the other side of the highway, uh, right behind the old, um, uh, hotel kind of that area, it's next to vacant property and a lot of residential properties. Um, you can see some basic property information here, uh, through, uh, the Bear County appraisal district, you know, that's gonna be your Bear County appraisal district reference number. If you want to go view any additional items, I think the important things to note from the slide is the size, it's roughly about one point nine acres. I don't know if Ian, that relatively that size. Um, and then suites and warehouses, that we have a pretty exact count of about ninety-seven, including suites and warehouses, um, just depending on their leasing option, but if we're looking at individual units, uh, throughout the complex, we're, we're sitting at ninety-seven. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so again, the property that is in question here, that's looking for the application is seven thousand and one west I H ten. This is a, a aerial that was taken a few months ago, uh, during construction before they finished the parking lot, but, um, we can see all four buildings there. Uh, building one, uh, suites and warehouses, building two, I believe is all warehouse. Uh, office warehouse, um, same thing with building three and building four, it's a split, um, just depending on how you're kind of going by your lease, but, um, that's how we, we kind of view that property there. Um, next slide, please. Great, so just a little bit of background information, I know Ian already gave it, but, uh, we received a applying, uh, application for a certificate of occupancy. And, um, after a little more further discussion, uh, this definition or this, uh, use, uh, that is wanting to be in this space would be considered motor vehicle and service and repair. If you can go to the next slide, please. Um, just to, to clarify, it is a detailing and cleaning place, um, but we're all kind of falling under the same definition, right? So it's very all-encompassing and there's not really any sway between what's an oil change place and what's a detailing place, right? We could only go based off of what our permitted uses table can be within that address. Um, so just to go over that definition, right? Um, ooh, I think I had a little more than I need to, but that underlying section is, is where they're kind of falling into that place. As you can see, tire repair, lubrication services, installation, anything in all of it is gonna fall under service and repair. There's not really any, uh, gray area to go between. Uh, I just wanna give a pros and cons, this is not a, you know, one way or the other, but just as, as a, uh, surface level of what you can see, pros, we're definitely gonna see increased local services amenities. Uh, we're providing more for our residents and, and our businesses, it's, it's something that, um, I don't think that we have currently in the city and something that can be provided. Um, our, we're gonna have a larger tax base from this, it is a taxable entity and they do taxable sales. Um, it's not just gonna be property taxes, but that is something that will, um, benefit the city. Improved occupancy at the location itself, I know Ian said, I believe it was seventeen tenants that were currently renting there. Um, out of the seventeen, it's a mixture of, you know, some multiple suites, some multiple warehouses. Um, I don't have the exact count on, on those ninety-seven spaces that are occupied, but obviously we want our occupancy to be higher in all of our business spaces and it's just gonna improve that, um, area as a whole, right? It's also gonna be diversified tenant, right? It's not a service or amenity that we currently provide, it's just gonna be something additional that we can do for the people here. Um, the possibility, um, you know, within our cons, right? Noise and air pollution is something that, um, should be taken into consideration, we're gonna see more, uh, increased vehicle traffic. Uh, you know, around residential properties, I'll cover that here a little shortly. Um, now, I know polluted water runoff was already addressed by Ian, but it's just something to consider. Um, I understand that, you know, by Ian standards, it's not, uh, an issue that might be raised, but, um, it is a precedent within this, uh, motor vehicle service and repair, because we're approving everything, not just one section of it. Next slide, please. Um, just to give a little more background on surrounding properties, again, we're, we're sitting around a residential district, we're fourteen, uh, single-family homes, uh, three low-rise office properties, um, that are across the street within the two hundred-foot boundary. Um, those stars, uh, purple stars on the right side of your screen, those are gonna be your O ones on properties. Any other property that's within that blue boundary is gonna be an R one residential, uh, single-family home, uh, within that two hundred-foot proximity. Uh, any questions before we kind of move on, was that my last slide? Okay, any questions that I can kind of help, uh, clarify here? I'm more than, I'm happy to ask Ian and come back up if there's another question directed to him, but.
Of the seventeen, um, occupants of the location, so there's ninety-seven spaces available, seventeen of them are occupied already, they're.
Seventeen lease agreements have been filled out and you can clarify a little more.
So what it is, seventeen tenants, some take two spaces, some.
Can you, can you come up for the?
So there's seventeen tenants, but some take two or three spaces, so percentage-wise in the park, it's probably just under forty percent occupied. Yeah.
And are most of those office or are there other retail?
Uh, they office warehouse, cause that's typically the kind of business that goes in there. They have an office where people come in and do business and then they either store something in the back or they deliver from the back. That's the, that's the, that's the idea.
Before we kind of move along here, I, I guess there's a few more slides that we didn't hit. Um, it was just this one? Okay, fantastic, within our city plan, right? Because I wanna make sure that we're, uh, looking at the guidance that the city's provided us over the past few years in that city plan twenty forty. Um, the chart on your right is gonna be identifications through not just the, the urban planners that developed the city plan for you a couple of years ago, but it's also based off of what weaknesses, threats were identified by residents at the time. Um, the addition of motor vehicle service or bear, uh, only addresses, uh, the threat of a shrinking tax base within the identified, um, items on our city plan, right? We're not really tackling any other items that were identified at the time. Um, for a little more background, this was two, three years ago when this was adopted, but it's something to take in consideration, right? We're not addressing multiple issues that, um, the city is having, um, problems and wants to tackle, we're, we're hitting one of them, but not, uh, multiple like we would see in other applications. And then that one was my last slide? Okay, fantastic.
I do have one question for you, because this goes to, to the legality of any protest. Did we receive any comments from the people noticed within the two hundred feet?
There was no, uh, comments from anybody within two hundred feet.
The sales of their products or goods benefit the city through sales tax?
Yes, that, this, uh, individual applicant would, yeah.
Any further discussion? Any further questions?
Forgetting, I'm gonna be the world's worst one on that, on the microphone, right? So we started out our public hearing with a motion and a second, uh, for recommendation of approval. Um, we've held the public hearing, we've heard the city staff comments, um, so chair, you can move on, uh, with the vote based on that original motion, um, that was made at the preliminaries of the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Hereby call for a vote, if there's another discussion?
I make a motion that we accept the proposal agreement as stated.
Is a little?
I move to recommend to the city council approval of the proposed amendments to the city code of ordinances, chapter one fifty-three zoning codes.
Right, so we have a, a motion, uh, to accept it and are you, are you seconding that motion?
I am seconding that move.
Okay.
Let's call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Leave a little?
Aye.
Mister Ebersol?
Aye.
Thank you for coming, Miss, Mister Fisher. Okay, for the opening hearing, open public hearing for consideration and possible action on a recommendation to the city council on amending the city code of ordinances, chapter one fifty-three zoning codes, article three, zoning districts and use regulations amending one fifty-three point three point one point sixteen of seven zero zero one west I H ten. The PUD zoning district requirements, three uses permitted. That'll be for Fisher and Abraque?
Yes, sir, we concluded that item, I'm so sorry, we're, we're moving on to the second set of items, uh, item number four.
So now we will hold a public hearing to receive public comments on amending the city's ordinance, chapter one fifty-three zoning codes, article three zoning district and use regulations amending side setbacks in the R one, R two, R three, R four, R six, O one, O two, C one, C two, M one and M two zoning districts.
Mister Garcia, please call the time.
The time is now six-twenty-two. At the moment, we call for a discussion or presentation? Is there any discussion or presentation at the moment?
Did we close the public hearing?
Yes, I will have the presentation done as part of the public hearing.
Sounds good, okay. Good evening again. Um, wait until the slides are up here. This one's a much shorter presentation, it's very straightforward, if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to clarify, please stop me as we, we start going through it. Um, so we're here to talk about the setback amendments, um, just to give a little background information. Uh, I've received multiple inquiries from residents and from business owners on how close they're able to build to their lot lines on the rear and the sides. Um, we're gonna discuss, uh, side setbacks, uh, on this instance, but it, it is a very strict, um, guidelines currently where we're sitting about twenty to twenty-five feet from each side, uh, that they have to leave that as empty, right? It, it's a buffer zone as it's sitting, so a lot of these business owners and these, uh, residents are not able to place anything closer to their own property, uh, you know, than fifteen, twenty, twenty-five feet, just depending on the zoning classification, so, uh, a lot of these, um, people that are coming to me are looking for this ordinance to be changed to allow more usage of their own space and their own property. Next slide, please. Okay, so here we're sitting on our current setbacks for all the zoning classifications in question from R one through R six, O one through O two, C one through C two, M one through M two. Uh, we're gonna be looking at item or column F there, side setback minimum, we can see our residential areas are sitting at ten feet. Um, our office areas are sitting at twenty, C one at twenty, C two, I wanna say is at ten, M one, M two at ten. Um, next slide, please. Our proposed amendments are gonna change this again on column F to five-foot setback all around. And this is just gonna pertain to the side properties, not anything on the rear, not anything on the front. Next slide, please. Um, just to, to clarify any fire hazard concerns, because I know this came up during our Board of Adjustments meeting a few months ago. A change in the side setbacks isn't really a fire hazard, um, I confirmed this with our, our fire chief and the inspectors. They have no, um, concerns coming into this that it's gonna propose an additional hazard. They don't think that, um, you know, fires are gonna spread any quicker than the response time, which at the time was about three minutes from the time they received a call from them to arrive in our property, so there's not really any safety, uh, hazards from changing the setback to be a little more lenient here. Next slide, please. Uh, just to cover benefits to smaller setbacks, you know, we're maximizing land use density, our usable footprint, right? Supporting a little bit higher of a density, we know our land within balcony sites is very valuable, there's not really any way for us to expand outwards. We wanna give our homeowners and our, our property owners the most use out of their space, we don't wanna limit what they're able to do there. And it's really reducing any underutilized space between buildings, right? Um, we're enhancing the design and flexibility, um, you know, where we're able to place buildings, any, um, items that are in that buffer zone that we talked about earlier, uh, as a, you know, benefit item as well as community live and livability. We're creating more walkable, accessible community spaces, um, you know, these side setbacks, although don't really present themselves as, uh, you know, being hard on our elderly population, right? Um, the walking distance is gonna take an effect, right? And if our buildings are bigger, we have more suites, more units per, per land area, right? They're gonna have to travel less distance, which is gonna make it much better for them to be able to access different areas of our city. And it's just gonna create a much more, uh, appealing, walkable community, uh, within balcony sites. And it, it contributes to much more vibrant land, streetscapes, right? We're not just looking at this, uh, wasted greenery, right? A lot of people, uh, present, um, these side setbacks as, hey, we're gonna have, you know, nice areas between buildings, it's gonna be not a nice or right, but more often than not, what do we see between the sides of buildings? Weeds, you know, trash cans, it's not really anything that is, is used, um, to benefit the property or benefit people that are, uh, traveling down the right of ways, right? So we're really trying to enhance the, the appeal of the city here. Um, just to, to show what we're supporting, right, in our city plan twenty forty, just like our previous presentation, we're supporting a lot of strategies here, um, that were identified a couple of years ago, uh, land use strategy four point two dash one, um, you know, it, the goal is to amend ordinances and develop policies to allow increased density, which this is tackling. Um, you know, surface area between the balcony sites, you know, I've already covered as being very valuable, there's no additional property. We're not gonna be obtaining anything from San Antonio, so we really need to, uh, use what we have to the best of our ability. Um, creating a pro-development environment, not only for our residents, but for our, our property owners and our businesses, right? We don't wanna see them have wasted space, we wanna increase, increase the sales tax, making their building footprint bigger and their, um, their business area bigger is only going to help promote that as well. Um, for residential, you know, housing strategy five dash seven, uh, more flexible law widths and depths and varying setbacks. Front and side yards could facilitate reinvestment into the neighborhood, right? I've had inquiries from residential developers and, and they, they see our setbacks as being very, um, strict, right? It doesn't promote the, the sense of us being welcoming as a city to help them develop whatever land is available or whatever property is available. This is just gonna help increase that, make it a little more friendly and, and indirectly help the, the contractors and those developers to, to start, you know, facilitating more new homes in the area. Um, infill and development strategy seven dash one, we're creating the mixed-use, walkable amenity bridge, transit, surf communities, like I mentioned. Uh, if we have more building width, you're having to travel less, right, on the sidewalk, we're gonna see more buildings, more entryways, more suites, that is just gonna, you know, promote a, a more healthy environment and, and a better aesthetic for the city. Um, and for our redevelopment strategy seven dash five, you know, coordinate and connect land use, density and transportation. This is connecting land use, it's connecting destiny, so we're really tackling a lot of, um, strategies that were aligned by our city plan by amending these side setbacks specifically. Yes, sir.
So like if, if I, if I wanna put a container in the backyard, does this, is this, I see the side affected, but I don't see the backyard, the rear, rear setback, it's still, is it still at twenty-five, the rear?
Twenty-five should. 25 should still be for the rear. This is just going to tackle side setbacks so we can place it on the agenda, you know, for future discussion. Cynthia, please correct me if I'm wrong, but this is just going to be side setbacks.
So like if I wanted to put a container in the backyard, it has to be 25 feet away?
25 feet from the rear of the property. Yes.
I think that is something that's a concern for me. I was thinking that the backyard, where the businesses, we only are limited, like we already have several businesses that already have containers in the back that are less than 25 feet. And rather than just hammer them and then put a finals and say you have to move them or get them out of there, I think we need to look at that and see if, can we discuss that and see if we can change those numbers too to give the, at least the commercial and like multi-use people more space.
Yeah, I think at the end of the meeting, we can propose additional items to be addressed in the future.
That's correct because it is a zoning change, right? And so any change we make to those zoning regulations, we have to have public and published notice. So we either pass this as is and we can move it forward, or you all can bring it back. We'd have to renotice and then bring it back with any changes to the back setbacks.
Yes.
That is a choice that y'all can make, but the main point is, is that we'd actually have to call for that public hearing, get posted notice, do the 200 feet notice again in order to make that change.
Yeah, because initially the original to allow the containers was to be able to put it all the way to the very back of the property because there is no way to put, for example, for his property and mine, I can't put one. It would be next to impossible. I don't have that territory, but I have it where it's five feet right, five feet rear, five feet right, left. Yes, I have room for it, but I, you know, that would be my property.
Absolutely. So, you know, the choice y'all have is you all can make, go ahead and make the recommendation on the side yard setback and then, you know, give notice to council that y'all would also like to consider the back setback. What's the proper term for the back?
Rear setback.
For the rear setback. And then, you know, if council gives the directive, then we will work on, you know, making those changes to the ordinance, putting the publication and the proper notices out and all.
I got a question on the height. For example, if I have a, I would like to put above my car port that just extends out over. If it's not, it has to be, it says this has the height story. Can it be less than 35 feet tall? Like if I just wanted to put a little carport that can't?
It can be less than 35 feet. That's just the max height that you can go on it.
And if we approve the five feet right now, it just has to go out everything but five feet or something less. It just overhangs right there, right? I'm trying to figure out if I can put a carport on the side of my building.
You can go five feet to the side setback. I, as far as the overhang, I think that would be encroaching on the side setback.
So it would be like limited to five feet?
It would be limited to five feet.
Okay.
Real quick, I understand that this is something that could really move forward our city, correct?
Yes.
So I'm going to jump in here right quick because we are moving to discussion. So we've received our presentation as part of the public hearing. So if we will go ahead and let's close the public hearing.
Yes, we're now close the public hearing. It is now 6:34. Now we'll open it up for discussion.
Yes, sir, you can call for discussion on item number five and that will be the approval item.
Yes, sir. So here I call for discussion, rule number five. Go ahead, you have the floor.
Residential, I think that this obviously needs to be worked out a little bit, right? Because?
Well, the commercial buildings, it needs to be worked out. The residential is, this is one of the things that was, we ran into last month when people were trying to build houses. There, it was, it was 10 feet and 20 feet and they couldn't put their, they had to come here and get a permit approved to build their house next to, within five feet of the building. But the thing was, the neighbors were already within five feet. This house was already five feet. This was already five feet. And then they were wrestling, they had to wrestle to get theirs approved so they could use the five foot. Then we had to approve that here.
Correct, but the properties that in balcony heights, you know, with respect to other localities that we have around us, right? We have larger plots and for developers or residents who want to come here and develop, I mean, you know, I'm not looking to develop my property, but I have a larger backyard than most of my peers, correct? And so if I need to move or build something back there, I would have to build 25 feet in from the back of the property.
It depends on the building. The accessory building does not fall in this ordinance change. If you want to go back and look at that, it would fall under R1, single-family home. And then there's an accessory building subsection and that's five feet from the rear and from the side. So if it's a shed, if it's not your main structure, that's where you lie. If it's your main, uh, single-family home, you would fall, what is it, 20? 25 feet from the rear, yeah.
Understood, which we can get to in our next meeting, correct? But we're also talking about commercial here. So when we, with respect to that as well, what are we trying to develop? Or what are we trying to do? What businesses are we trying to bring in? Will this help us? Are we talking about gentlemen? And we talk about walkability in the neighborhood, right? Nobody's walking across Fredericksburg. So I think before we talk about walking across Fredericksburg, we need to talk about crosswalks and getting the proper safety measures in place for that to be voted on, correct? But for the neighborhood, what businesses are we considering this for? Is it like small retail, small?
This is going to cover everything from O1, O2, which is low-rise office, mid-rise office, right? Local retail, mid-rise retail and manufacturing light and medium. That's what this is going to benefit for, um, commercial properties.
Do you see the benefit of it?
It, what it, what it is supposed to work for is the commercial, especially on Hillcrest, which is mostly commercial. And since the setbacks are 25 feet, most of the people that we want to attract to come and buy and live here now, as far as the commercial side, we want them to be able to store their equipment because the majority of them are not beauticians. They're not, they're companies that have equipment. So they can't fit it in the building. They can't build no more in the building, so they need a storage. So those storages is where the metal storages is what they're trying to get. We just approved, what the city council approved. And now we're trying to get them to where they're pushed out of the way so they can have enough parking to park their commercial vehicles and still store their equipment.
Is there a specific business that we're referring to?
There's?
There's several.
There's one that's pushing this a little more than others, right? But there's, I want to say that I've, over the past 10 or so months I've been here, I've received about 10, 15 inquiries about, you know, side setbacks, what we're able to kind of really build and facilitate in redevelopment here in the city. Now, I want to just clarify a little further. Hillcrest, I think, is going to benefit the most short-term, but we need to lay the foundation, the infrastructure going forward to help facilitate that redevelopment, right? And I completely agree, you know, the walkability is not up to standard where it should be. Right crosswalks, sidewalk infrastructure. But what we want to do is we want to tackle the city plan 2040 strategy so we can slowly start building that foundation and those building blocks to slowly get it right. Because it's not a, an overnight one decision. It's let's, let's lay out as much foundation as we can to help people start coming in and us getting to that end goal. I think that that's a much longer, you know, five, 10, 15 year plan where we start seeing this be a very walkable community.
For a multi-use building, like commercial and like, if I had an apartment complex, I'm in a resident living in my building and also I was having local retail. Cause I'm good, I'm thinking about rezoning my building. I'm thinking about making it for, like I could have a tenant there and I can also have local retail.
This is not applicable to mixed-use zoning classifications?
This is not happening?
No.
That was my?
Can we add that to this? Can I'm like add it?
Mr. Vino?
So the answer is, when we, again, and this, because you all are new to this board, right? Or several of y'all are new to this board and commission. So whenever we give notice for a zoning regulation and we give very specific notice, right? That's what we can act on. So if it's not written within that ordinance, then we have to renotice and make, you know, and republish and do all of that if we're going to make any changes.
So at this point, we would have to suspend further consideration, something, agree on that and then resend it, repost it, correct?
So, yeah, you all could table this item. If you're not ready to make a decision on it, you all could table this item. You all can give a presentation to city council, but the agenda is posted. So I don't know if y'all have a standing item for planning and zoning or not. The staff can also, you know, bring forward additional recommendation, you know, based on discussion here.
To further the conversation, just real quick, I don't want to drag this on too long. I think this is very important for our community. As a resident, as a business owner, I have a lot of peers who are business owners who have expressed a lot of interest in moving into balcony sites. As someone who spends a lot of time outdoors, running in the community, I don't feel safe running up and downhill crest and I definitely don't feel safe running up and down Fredericksburg. I like to run inside the neighborhood. A lot of those businesses that are talking to me and showing interest about moving into our community, they're, they're trying to figure out if they can move in to the community on this side of Fredericksburg. You know, there's plots of land that are available that they want to buy up. I think this would benefit them because I lived in New York for 10 years. So I'm all about businesses, retail businesses being right off the sidewalk. You're walking down, you can walk into a coffee shop, you could walk into a pizza shop, an artisan pizza shop, not a Pizza Hut, right? You can, you're going to have small businesses. I think that those entities are important to our, our community because we'll benefit from the sales tax of those things. So I do believe that this is important as far as the commercial businesses go because having them, having the access for them to be able to build closer to the sidewalk means that they can go back. I don't know if I'm able to speak on it.
But that's the front.
So that's part of the, I think that's what I'm hearing is that you all might want to be looking at the setbacks, period.
Yes.
Side, front, rear, you know, all of those. And so this is designed specifically for side setbacks. So that's all we have authority for tonight, right? So y'all can table?
Aside setbacks only?
Yep, this is all we can do this evening. So we either put this through and make a recommendation with it, or y'all can table it and say, you know, we think we need to look at it on a more broad basis. And if that's the case, then, then staff has some work to do to prepare an ordinance.
I move to recommend Mr. Chairman to table this. And so we can kind of get it to where, because this is very important for our city. I think it's a very important thing. I know we're just talking about the sides, but I think that it could benefit the residents, the developers who want to build homes in the neighborhood, the small businesses that want to come into the community and how we can benefit from all of that with, you know, again, sales taxes, walk, we're talking about walkability. We're talking about safety. And we're also talking about amenities to provide to the citizens. And I think that this is, it's, if, if it was more clear and there was more included in it, I would, I would be for it right now. But I think that we could either table it or we could just vote on the side and then call another hearing to discuss everything else that we've kind of talked about tonight.
Yes, well, I second the move that we table it.
A motion and a second?
Yes.
And I want to make sure that I'm?
Yes.
And if we table it, how long do we get? How long will it take for us to get reconvene and?
We can set, we pretty much can set the next meeting ourselves.
Awesome.
We're probably about a month. No, no, no worries.
I like everything that we're talking about.
Yeah, we're probably about a month out from our next meeting.
Just to clarify, Hillcrest is going to be widened here. What is the timeframe for that?
Fiscal year 27.
27, so in a year and a half from now or less than that, they're going to widen. So I'm losing for my property 10 feet of my frontage, my front lawn. So that's gone. It belongs to the state now. So if you do, if somebody, you bring in somebody that's going to buy, they have to take that into consideration, that 10 feet of that frontage or the front, their front lawn is gone.
Is it going towards sidewalks?
It's going to sidewalks and street. They're going to widen the street and put five feet of sidewalk. So five feet more of street and five feet of sidewalk. Okay, so just keep that in mind when you approach.
In addition to the 10 feet?
Well, that's where we, that's where we have to come into an agreement of what we want to do as far as the setbacks are concerned.
Mr. Ebersol, your mic?
If you're on the front, they're basically, if we had to make a change, we'd cut the front off, the front part of our buildings off. Cause I also have a business on Hillcrest. And I also was gonna, I was gonna change the, change it to a multi-use so I could run local retail and also put up, cause I'm 68 and if I turn it into an apartment complex or something like that, or a fourplex, then I can't do that. I'll just put myself like right back out of business if we don't approve something like that. So if I, otherwise I just have to like, I don't, like I said, I'm going to, it's just going to put me out of the code again if I want to change it. So if I make it a multi-use, I've already had it, the building already wired.
All right, so we're running a little bit astray here of our posted agenda item. So we've got a motion and a second to table item number five.
Can I get a vote? Aye.
Aye.
Millie? Is Valero? Service all? Motion carries.
You can call for citizens to be heard, but I don't know that we have any.
Do we have any citizens to be heard? Okay, let's bypass that. No. Any other business? Nope. Excellent, so a move that we adjourn?
Second.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, adjournment at 6:47. Thank you, everybody, for coming in.